Meeting of the Dickinson County School Board is now in session. For the record, I would like to recognize that all the school board members are present, as well as Tanya Baker, Board Clerk Scott Mullins, School Board Attorney, and Ms. Robinson, Division Superintendent. At this time, would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence?
I don't see the flag. Usually the flag stands there, but we'll pretend. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Board members, we have the agenda for tonight's meeting. Are there any additions or changes to the agenda?
Mr. Chair, we have no addition to the agenda.
Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
So move.
Second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No? That brings us to public comment. Mr. Hicks, will you please read your guidelines for public comment?
A period of time for public comment will be designated on the meeting agenda during which the public may comment on issues related to public education. The Dixon County School Board believes that the citizens of the county should be heard and that this is the acceptable format for receiving public comment. After the public comment section of the meeting is closed, the public shall not be allowed to participate in general board member discussions regarding agenda items. Public participation with the board members regarding agenda items can be disruptive and the practice is prohibited by Robert's Rules of Order. It is the desire of the school board to treat each member of the public fairly and equally. Allowing one individual to participate while excluding others is unfair. The board may hold such public hearings as may be necessary to allow the public to more fully express their concerns, or the board may place the public comment section of any meeting at the end of the meeting to allow additional public comments. While we do not wish to restrict the free expression of opinion, we feel that certain restrictions may be necessary so that the order and reasonable standards of decor may be maintained. We ask that the following standards be adhered to. The speaker will be recognized by the chair. Each speaker will be limited to five minutes. Speakers will refrain from the use of vulgarity or profanity and will avoid negative or embarrassing comments directed toward specific children or students. Board members should not respond to issues presented by speakers unless clarification is necessary. Matters of concern raised under public comment will be referred to the proper official for investigation and future board consideration if necessary.
Thank you. Ms. Martin, will you please be our timekeeper? For public comment, we'd like to recognize Kathy Music with VPE.
Chairman Mullins, Mrs. Robinson, members of the board. First off, I'd like to take the opportunity to wish each of you a wonderful holiday season, Merry Christmas, and hope that 2022 brings much love and joy to each of you. And talking about 2022, the year is ending and Governor Northam is leaving us, but he has one more budget to put in place and it's looking like it may be really nice for teachers. It's proposed to have a 10, I think 10 and a quarter percent raise over the biennium. And also, it's looking like it could have some infrastructure, which makes everybody happy with all our aging schools that we have. Of course, you are ahead of that game a little bit, but incoming Governor, Governor-elect Yonkin also said, that was one of the things he ran on, was getting Virginia's teachers' pay up to the state average. So I guess I say that to say, you know, it's hard to believe we're halfway through the school year, another really difficult school year, and it's time to start thinking about budgets and how we're going to get all those pieces together. And I commend you for always trying to put your teachers first, and I hope that as we go forward into this next year, next budget season, we can continue to figure out how to get all the pieces of the puzzle to fit together to make the strongest school division that you can have. So thank you for what you do, and again, I wish everybody a Merry Christmas. Thank you.
Thank you. And that brings us to Phyllis Mullins with the DEA.
Good evening, members of the board, Mrs. Robinson. The DEA is thankful to each and every one of you for everything that you have done. We are especially appreciative of the extra that you have given us. We've got several things coming up that we're looking forward to. The governor's budget could be a hard fight, but DEA is going to be up there in January on the 24th. We'll be having our lobby day, and we expect several thousand members to be there. And we usually have a real good showing. We will be meeting with our legislators before then. We may get to meet in person, but it may be virtual, but we will be having one-on-one conversations with them. The IPD conference was well-attended that we went to in Richmond. Chandler Mullins and I went, and we had good breakout sessions. We learned a lot, and you really don't know until you hear people from the other end of the state talk about their buildings and their school boards what we have to appreciate. And I just want to say thank you to all of you. And I hope you have a very merry Christmas and a happy, healthy new year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mullins, we have no one else signed up for public comment.
Okay, thank you. Our next agenda item is the consent agenda, which includes the approval of minutes, approval of monthly bills, discussion of school activity funds, approval of field trips, approval of elementary school construction invoices, and the approval of the bank reconciliation documents. Any questions or discussion on the consent agenda? Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Our next agenda item is information for the school board. Ms. Robinson.
Thank you. Mr. Mullins, isn't it wonderful to have all of these students here with us? I think it's been about a year and a half that we've had any students at our board meetings, so we're just thrilled to have our parents and our students here so that we can recognize them. But first of all, looking at our important dates, information from the board, just some important dates there, the 20th through the 31st, of course, schools will be closed and it's our holiday. January 3rd, which Mr. Deal is going to speak to, is our Professional Development Teacher Work Day, and then January the 4th, students will return to school for the second semester. At this time, I'd like to ask Mr. Dennis Deal, Director of Instruction, to briefly share with us about the work day on Monday, January the 3rd. Thank you, Mr. Deal.
Hey, good evening. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Yes. I guess, as she alluded to, on January the 3rd, we do have a Professional Development Day. On that day, I had several responses from teachers saying that the books that we're using, they were good and they had a lot of resources, but they needed a little bit more exposure to what those resources were and how to locate them. So the book company is going to be doing a virtual presentation for my K-5 teachers. We're going to break it down into K-2 and 3-5 bands so that they can address those lower kids' needs better, lower teachers' needs better. Also, on that day, Ms. Karen Martin will be doing the presentation for grades K-12. During that time, they're going to talk about social services and mandated reporting. And the next thing that's going to take place on that day is Mr. Max Sessler will be doing a presentation on communities and schools. That's the new organization he's with, so I'm curious what that's going to be all about. So I'm sure he'll tell me a little bit more. Do you guys have any questions? Okay, thank you. And if I don't see you anymore, I hope you do have a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Deal. All right. I'm going to ask Laura Stanley, I'm sorry, Laura, I do that, Laura Taylor, I'm sorry, Laura, Director of Business and Finance to come, and we are working on the FY '23 budget, and so we have several things coming up. Welcome, Ms. Taylor.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the board. As Superintendent Robinson has said, it is time to start working on the budget for fiscal year '22, '23. So we are in the initial phases of that. We're in the data gathering phase right now. So we'd like to ask if any of you have any items that you would like to be, have those considered in next year's budget, any new items, any new ideas that may have financial impacts? If you have any of those, please contact Superintendent Robinson or myself, and we can certainly work those into our budget considerations. Of course, we have a very short window of time for budget, as you're well aware of, so just try to think about that as you have some time and get those ideas into us so we can work with those. One of the main issues that we are going to see that will change with the budget is the minimum wage increase, of course, does increase again on January the 1st. So we will be budgeting at that new higher rate for minimum wages starting for the entire fiscal year next year. I did include, just as a refresher, in your packets, you have Dickinson County Public Schools' part-time and substitute rates. Those were approved for this fiscal year, and of course, there were two columns at the time in accordance with how the minimum wage was going to change in Virginia. So you'll want to look over to the right-hand side, and those are the minimum wage rates and our part-time substitute rates that will be in effect for all hours worked January 1st, 2022, and in the future. Does anybody have any questions or concerns about budget prep or the change in the rates If there's nothing now, you can feel free to contact Superintendent Robinson or myself at your convenience. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor.
Other, just information for the board, our upcoming virtual conferences and seminars, please, if any of those look promising or inviting to you, please let us know. I also wanted to share with you that Ms. Tanya Baker received an email from VSBA that next year for the November conference in Williamsburg, Dixon County is, may get rooms at the lodge. And so that is such a time saver, because if we've been there before, you know we have to get room, then we have to travel. But they, it's on a rotation basis, so Dixon County Schools or Public School Board may get a room at the lodge where the meeting is actually held. And so it avoids all that traffic, it avoids traveling, all of that. So if you're interested, we are going to reserve rooms in January, so we'll talk more about that. Thank you.
Ms. Robinson, will you please tell us about good news from our schools?
Oh, I'd love to, I'd love to. It is so wonderful just to see everyone here. And again, I want to thank our staff and our students, our children, our parents, everyone here. We've not had children here, and it's, this is, we forget sometimes, just seeing them here is such a great honor. I'm going to begin with DECA, and I'm going to ask Chris Robinson, the DECA sponsor to come. One of our students who will be named, or remain nameless, shared with us that when the DECA competition and 14 out of the 16 students won, that it was difficult for Mr. Robinson to walk through the door, you know, because he was so excited. And if you know Chris Robinson, he's probably the most humble person, low-key, and so I would have liked to have been there. We're not related, but in a way we are, so I can say that about him. But he's very, always very calm, very, you know, and so I would have loved to have seen that. But Mr. Robinson, welcome, and please introduce your program and your students.
Don't believe a word they tell you.
I believe every word and more.
I'd like to take this opportunity to thank the school board members and Ms. Robinson for inviting us here tonight. I'm probably one of the luckiest teachers that reads you. I have a good group of kids that I work with, and they believe in me and believe in what we're doing, so that means a lot when it comes to trying to do club activities and so forth. So at this time, what I want to do is go ahead and announce the winners. What I will do is start with the first-place winners. I'll announce their name and the category, and they'll walk up on stage.
Yes, please, if they would, because we'd like to, everyone to see them and for the board to...
Hayden Hickman is first place, Business Service Management. Second-place winners will be Madison Mullins, Food Marketing. Morgan Slimp, Principles of Business Administration. Hayden Mullins, Sports and Entertainment Marketing. Abigail Mullins, Human Resource Management. Third-place winners will be Diamond Delaney, Apparel and Accessories. Cadence Country Oil, Principles of Hospitality and Tourism. Clayton Hickman, Job Interview. Brayden Sullivan, Automotive Services. And I think I've got everybody that's here tonight, is that correct? Let me just share with you a few minutes here, just what these kids go through to get ready for competition. The way it's set up is when they compete, they are presented with a role play, okay? And in that role play, there will be a situation that they have to solve, okay? Now here's the kicker. They got 10 minutes to read the scenario, to read the role play. They make notes within that 10 minutes, okay? Once that 10 minutes is up, they meet with the judge and present their solution to the scenario. So, you know, it's a task, and they do an excellent job, they responded to practices, and I just, you know, my hats go off to them. They do a great job.
That's wonderful.
So thank you all. Thank you.
And would the parents of the children that are represented here, would you please stand, our parents? Thank you for your support.
Thank you.
And our hats off to you, Mr. Robinson. Thank you for all you do. Thank you, everyone.
Good job.
Also, Mr. Robinson, we understand that the first-place winners will be going to Virginia Beach in March.
Yes. Also, we were able to make the second-place winner.
Oh, wonderful.
So that's worked out good, too.
Wonderful.
It's great.
Wonderful. All right. Our next group that we'd like to invite is Mr. White and his staff that work with our Scholastic. And if they'll introduce themselves, and welcome again.
Good evening, guys. Good to see you all again. As Ms. Robinson mentioned, you know, it's our Scholastic Bowl. Joey Hall is not able to be here tonight, but Holden, their assistant coach, and then Jordan Kearney is our middle school coach.
All right.
Yeah, so we've had a good tradition of, my wife started the middle school, and now we have kept going with it, and we're hoping that in the future, as it has the last couple years, it's really gave us a good head start on all the other schools. So a lot of schools are jealous, they tell me all the time, you're able to walk over to the middle school and be able to recruit, and we... to recruit, and we can't even do that. So it's a huge advantage. I don't think, I don't think some of us realize the advantage that we have over some of those schools in the Mountain Seven. So they're very envious, which I'm okay with that.
That's okay.
So at this time, I'll go ahead and announce our team members. And one at a time, you can come up. Landon Couch. David Palmer. Captain Brody Buchanan. Rachel Mullins. Katelyn Charles. Connor Teiser. Daniel Greer. Benjamin Moore. And one more, Madison Mullins. And Josh, guys. Two more, two more. Yeah, I was about to say, if I didn't announce Josh, you'd never let me live to see the end of it. So anyway, so we have concluded our regular season this year. And we are standing eight and four, tied right now for second place going to district tournament, which will be at the end of January. Very proud of these guys, very hard workers. We start the first week of September. And if you make regionals, we are not done until March. So we're talking six, seven months season. And if you make state, you're talking eight months. That were, so almost a whole school year can be dedicated to what we do. So they put in a lot, a lot of hours. So I'm very proud of them. And like I said, hopefully, when come January, tournament comes around, we can catch fire and so we can make regionals again like we did last year. So like I said, guys, this is your team and our parents out there are being glad this year.
They will please stand. Our parents of our Scholastic Bowl, would you please stand to be recognized?
They're accused to pull up to me and our coaching staff. So I said, I couldn't be part of these guys. So they deserve all the accolades that we can give them. Thank you, guys. Y'all have a good holiday.
Thank you very much, Mr. White, Mr. Lewis, Mr. Kearney. Thank you very much. Thank you so much. Thank you, thank you. Our last group that we'd like to recognize is April Haye and Portia Fletcher. And I'd like to ask them to come. If you've been around at all our cafeteria, there's always a great debate about white biscuits and wheat biscuits. And so Ms. Fletcher and Ms. Haye had this as a learning experience for our students. And so I'd like for them, are any of your students here?
I don't think so, Mrs. Robinson. Not quite sure, but I think it's just the two of us. I promise the story will be entertaining.
Ms. Haye, if you'd like to, you and, oh, are you, do you have something for us? Okay.
Well, we do. Okay, as Mrs. Robinson mentioned, this did start out as, I guess, as an issue that I noticed in the classroom, especially when I have a room full of teenagers and most of them boys, no one was eating breakfast. And they would bring it to the room, but it usually ended up on the counter or in the trash can. And it kind of bothered me. So I started asking questions, why aren't you eating? You're teenagers, you should be doing this. So the common answer was, we don't like it. And I said, well, why not? And they started complaining about the whole wheat biscuits, they just weren't very tasty. So we're going to thinking, what can I do? So I called Mrs. Compton at the school board office and explained what was going on in the classrooms, that it bothered me that the kids were going this long and not eating. So she suggested that I contact my senator. So that's when my lesson plan was born. I thought, why should I do it when I've got 70 kids that could write letters? And Ms. Fletcher has 70 kids that could write letters. So that's what we did. So it was, it was a great learning experience for the kids. We went through the entire writing process of how to write the letters. We talked about the issue. We talked about things that we should put in it, things that we should say, and the importance of what we were doing. And we actually went through the entire gamut. They did the planning, they did the proofreading, they did the editing, and they did the typing. And yes, we did have to teach them how to sign their name in cursive. And we practiced all of this stuff and thus the letters were created. So then, our goal here was, we thought that perhaps we could get a nice little card or a letter from the senator to acknowledge what the students were doing. So that was our goal here, we were working toward that. So one day on evening bus duty, here comes Mr. Whitner toward me. And he's talking as he's walking. And he looks at me and he said, Ms. Haye, did you have your students write letters to the senator about biscuits? And I said, yes, I did. And he said, well, you have a parent on the phone that's needing some more information. So I go in and I put on my best teacher voice, very pleasant, at 3:30 in the afternoon. And I said, this is Ms. Haye, how can I help you? And the gentleman introduced himself and said, I'm calling from Senator Warner's office in Richmond about your biscuit issue. And I'm like, okay. So we've got someone's attention. So he said that the letters had reached Senator Warner and he was, had been reading them and he was interested in what was going on, why our students wasn't enjoying the breakfast and all that. So I answered the questions to the best of my ability. And then he informed me that the letters were being sent to our local office in Abington and someone there would be in contact with us. So a few days go by and I get an email from the representative there saying, we would like for you to call the office at your earliest convenience so we can discuss a plan with you. So I'm thinking, okay. I have no authority to create a plan. I have no authority to approve a plan, but I'll make the phone call anyway. So I did. And again, we went through the gamut of, you know, what's going on? What was your process here? What did you do and all this? So he then informs me that Senator Warner was on board with this. He wanted to work with it to see if he could do something about getting our white biscuits back so the students would eat. So at that point, he tells me that Senator Warner wants to treat all of our 7th grade students to breakfast from Hardee's. So I didn't wait for anyone's approval. I accepted that and I said, sure, we can do that. So then when I proposed this to Mr. Whitner, he looks at me and he's all excited because he likes the white biscuits, too. And he says, you will need to get this approved by Mrs. Robinson. So then my first thought was, I didn't ask Mrs. Robinson if we could do this. So now I'm going to have to tell Mrs. Robinson, we're having breakfast from the senator without her approval. But, so I spoke with Mrs. Robinson and she was on board. And she said, now, and I remember, and I'm going to quote you on this, Mrs. Robinson, you said, now, April, I'm sure you will do this, but I want you to proofread those letters, word for word, because we do not want you to send letters that have all these mistakes. So I'm thinking, oh, my gosh, I'm going to have to tell Mrs. Robinson that we've already sent the letters. And what's going on? So I did. And she was gracious, she was all excited, too, because she said she also likes white biscuits. So da-da-da-da-da, moving forward, the date was set. So on November the 5th, at approximately 8:30, here comes Mr. Shane Clemm from the Abington office with Hardee's biscuits, probably the most productive day of the Hardee's in Clintwood. Not only did all of the 7th grade students have Hardee's biscuits paid for by the senator, but all the 7th grade teachers, cafeteria staff, custodians who were in the cafeteria helping with this process, we all had Hardee's biscuits paid for by Senator Warner. So Mr. Clemm, if you will start our presentation. Mr. Clemm comes and he speaks with the students, telling them, you know, that they are, their voices were heard and how important it was for them to get it out there, you know, their issues and that things, they can make a change. So the students also prepared questions and he did a very excellent job answering those questions for them. So here we have some pictures of some of the students with their Hardee's biscuits. And it was a very enjoyable experience, you know? Not everybody can say that the senator brought breakfast for them. And I think the final picture here is coming up. And the one on the right is obviously someone who needs to lay off the biscuits. But it was, it was an enjoyable experience. Last I heard from Mr. Clemm, he said that Mr. or Senator Warner is, he does have a representative and he is in contact with the USDA, still working on getting this changed for me. So I'm also a firm believer that if we get our white biscuits back, then attendance will improve in the county because we had good attendance that day. So that's my story, Mrs. Robinson. I did it again, I'm sorry.
Thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you. That was great. And Senator Warner has always been such a strong supporter of Dixon County and our Dixon County schools. And so we're very proud to be a part of that. Mr. Mullins, if we could just have just a short recess?
Sure.
Because some of our students and their families may, you're welcome to stay for the meeting, but if you'd like to leave, you'll have a few minutes to do that during our recess. And thank you very much for coming. I'm going to ask Ms. Martin if she'll just come to the front, please, and tell us about our enrollment and our attendance. I think those are the yellow sheets in your packet.
I thought she'd forgot me. I was smiling a little bit, and then she caught me and remembered me. I'm glad we're in the good days from our schools, because our attendance this month, compared to last month, we are up one student, so that's good. It's better to be up one than down one. We still have a deficit compared to last year, but I guess one battle at a time. So I'm excited about that one student that we are up. The percentages for the month, Clintwood overtook Arlington this month with 90.05. Arlington has 89.57. And as you can see, we're hanging pretty close in the 88, 89 range. Hopefully, if things will calm down, we can get back in the 90 to 93 range, which has always been our goal. The information that's in the packet with you is the same thing that I give you each month, just to give you an idea of how the numbers break out. There's also at the back of the packet is as far as the withdrawals and new entries. I'd like to give you a copy of that as well. And are there any questions?
And of course, the quarantines, Ms. Martin, are affecting our percentages, aren't they?
They are, they are. If a student is in quarantine or tests for COVID, it's listed as excused absences. If they do their work while they're gone, while they're out, then we can change that to present remote per the VDOE, and that helps a whole lot. So each school is working diligently to remind students of, you know, do you work while you're out, and you can get curated, and the days won't count against you. And we're improving greatly with that. I think we're at 80% now, but 80% of the students have been doing their work while they're quarantined, so that we can count them.
And restriction can continue.
Yes. So we're pleased with that, and just we'll continue to push for more kids to do the work if they're quarantined. Any other questions, comments? I thank you, and I'm with everyone else. I wish you a happy holidays. I'm excited to taste this rub, but my friend, Mr. Hicks, is done, so join us for that. So excited. I do wish you a happy holidays, and God bless you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Martin.
Thank you. So our next agenda item is update on the new elementary school, Mrs. Robinson.
I'm going to ask Mr. Burge and Mr. Ellsworth to come to the front. They're going to be sharing with us a little bit about our building. I know that several of you had the honor to tour it today. And then also, Mr. Ellsworth with Mr. Mullins will tell us about the PPA process and update us on that. Welcome, sir.
Welcome. Good to see y'all this evening. As somebody who walked through a school, you can see it's continually changing. Things are going well. We've had great weather for the past couple of weeks, and I wish we could have been putting a roof on last week. But anyway, the progress has been pretty good this month. Seems like I was just here reporting, but it has been a month. They should have topped out the last CMU wall today for the load bearing on the second floor. The steel guys will be back next week to finish the bar joists and the roof deck. The roofer started yesterday, I mean Monday, on the insulation that they had. They've got the roof over the electrical room, which is very important, so we can start getting switchgear set and getting power into the building from AEP. Along with, they've got about half of the kitchen covered. So as long as they have material, they'll continue work. The remaining material is supposed to be here next week. Hopefully, that date hopes, and there's not a delay. And there's a lot of subcontractors out there working now. Electricians are roughing in the walls, putting the boxes in and conduit and above the ceiling, where we've already pulled the slab on the second floor. The plumbers have been installing their copper piping for the water lines. The sprinkler guy has pretty much put his rough-in in for the first floor. They are forming the last ICF wall on the north side of the classroom wing this week. Probably pulling that next week, if not this week. I expect it to be next week, though. So things are going good. The site guys are finishing up the storm work and hope to, are planning to install the fiber conduit from the old, from the high school over to the new building for the fiber connection between the buildings. Like I said, Scansker's been on site, and we've been monitoring the work and quality. Things are looking good. So project's still on budget. All the furniture and fixtures have been ordered. We got that ordered in, so we wouldn't get a big price increase. So hopefully, in the next few weeks, there will be a lot of it on the roof by the next school board meeting, and have a good report for you at that time as well. Next week, they plan to start the brick on the east side.
Wow.
While the steel guys are working on this side. So it's going well. Any questions? All right, I appreciate it. And if I don't see you again, I wish you Merry Christmas.
Mr. Burge, do you want to review the? Okay, that's fine. I didn't know.
Curtis would have had a hard time probably with them. Oh, no. Sorry about that. That's pretty embarrassing, isn't it?
That's okay. You have a copy of this, and several of you saw this today, so that's exciting.
So this is a picture of the second floor. It was a little bit different. I've been showing you pictures from the roof of the middle school down on it, but this week, this month, we've done a little different. This is the classroom wing that is running with the school, next to the school. As you can see, the school there in the, through the window openings. This is the walls are poured. This is where they'll be setting bar joists and decking next week. Next, this is where they are forming this wall here on the right, on the north side, the wing that runs this way across the back. They already have that wall up above the windows formed up, so it's moving along really well. Next, this is the office area. They will be putting the decking over this next week as well. And you can see sprinkler pipe laying on the floor. This is for the rough-in on the second floor, because most all the pipe on the first floor is already installed. Next, this is electrical room. This was our last concrete pour in the building. Next, this is looking down the main corridor. You can see sprinkler pipe hanging up there. You can see copper. You can see the walls are up, decking's on, the concrete's poured above it. So it's moving well there as well. Next, this is the front entrance where the stair and the slide will go. Next, this is one of the classroom walls. Maybe a little hard to tell, but like I said, you can see the plumbing that's already in the wall. They've already ran the conduits in there and above the ceiling, getting ready for it to get dried in, so we can insulate and start hanging drywall. Next, this is another picture of one of the low-bearing walls on the second floor. Next, this is some of the storm work on the outside of the building on the west side. This is where we had to move it out for the new addition. Next, I think that's the last one. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome, Mr. Ellsworth. Good to have you with us, sir.
Yep. And Tim did do a much better job than I could have done on those pictures, so. Good evening, everybody. It's good to see you and be back to give an update on, I guess it's only fitting to follow up on Tim's presentation of the new elementary school, to talk about the next phase, which is the, what we're calling the classroom wing addition. As you take this down, okay? As you're well aware, you have received about $5.1 million in ESER funds to build this addition. And shortly thereafter, you received a proposal from Queston Berry's Construction, who teamed with ZMM Architects Engineers and the Lane Group, same team that's building the elementary school, to design and construct this classroom wing addition, which you all approved that proposal a couple of months back. So since then, we have been working back and forth with them to, you know, vet the design, what's the project's going to end up actually being, how many classrooms, what it's going to look like, the cost of that, the schedule, all the fine details, which have culminated into an interim agreement, which you have a copy of, and is about an inch or so thick that you have with you tonight. And so, you know, that, if you, there's a lot of detail in here, but in essence, it's similar format to what you approved for the new elementary school. Mr. Mullins has been involved with helping us finalize this contract, which Queston Berry's Construction is comfortable with, and we feel like we're comfortable with. It does include certain things, like it has a contract cost limit, the maximum that you're going to pay for design and construction of that classroom wing. It's got details on what the design is going to look like. It's got schedule information, all the terms and conditions of the contract are in here. But like I said, it's very similar to the one that you approved for the new elementary school. That contract only includes, you're only paying them for design phase services at this point. They were going to come back to you with a guaranteed maximum price, like they did the new elementary school, probably around the March timeframe, somewhere around there. Assuming that it's still good, and we can fit it within the confines of this contract, then we would execute a construction contract for them to start construction, mostly late spring, early summer, next year. So about the time the new elementary school's wrapping up, they're going to start working on the new addition, so that it can be finished in the spring of next year, give us plenty of time to move furniture in and get ready for the next school year.
And Mr. Ellsworth, if I could interrupt you just for a second. Members of the board, Mr. Ellsworth will be going with us into closed session tonight. Some of the details of the agreement involve closed session materials on negotiations, pricing, things like that. And those are things that I think we would prefer to deal with initially in closed session. So we wanted to do this so the public would be generally aware of what was going on, that we were moving forward on the design work, that we were doing an agreement on that. But we will go into the weeds a little bit further about this in closed session.
So the timeline moving forward would be the board to approve moving forward with this agreement with Queston Berry's Construction, so that design can start in January, in essence. We still have to go to the Board of Supervisors on December 28th, ask for their approval. So we're going to make sure they have a copy of this and, you know, help work through any details or questions they have between now and then. But assuming they approve it, we would execute it. And like I said, we would, they would be off and running on the design of the new addition. So Scott, I don't know if you have anything to add about?
No, I just think it's important for the board to understand that the interim agreement that we're talking about tonight is for the design work. And the design workers to make sure that they design a school that we can afford within our budget. And so this is an important step one, but it's not the big step. The big step is actually the construction contract later on. But this is exactly the way we did it before with this school, the PPA. This is the typical approach that we take when doing a PPA procurement.
Any questions for me at this time?
And again, Mr. Ellsworth will be coming back, and we'll sort of drill down just a little bit about the negotiated concepts in closed session.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Ellsworth. We certainly appreciate those members of the board that could tour today. I apologize for the short notice when we saw today's meeting, and then we saw the weather was going to cooperate. We thought we can't miss this opportunity, because other times it's been raining, or it's been too cold, or it's getting darker. But several of you shared with me that you had a great experience, and so that was wonderful. And just think how exciting that's going to be. So, thank you.
All right, next agenda. Our next agenda is the proposed process for the Dickinson County School Board Reorganizational Meeting in January of '22. Mrs. Robinson?
Thank you. Before you, we have just a proposed process for the reorganizational meeting, which will take place in January 2022. The date will be to be determined. If we have an earlier, we have to, if we have a special call meeting early in January, then we will have the reorganizational meeting before we have that. It is very similar to last year. Again, a board chair will be elected, the election of officers, the meeting dates and times, discussion for nuts and bolts. We proposed meeting dates, as we did this past year, on the fourth Wednesday of each month, but we can certainly, at the board's pleasure, change that. So I also included just the proposed dates for your attention and your consideration. So questions or comments regarding the reorganizational meeting, or any changes that the board would like to discuss for the reorganizational meeting?
Do we have a date for that meeting?
Excuse me?
Do we have a date for that meeting?
We do not yet, Mr. Hicks, but I believe, Mr. Hicks, that if we, with the interim agreement, we may have to have schedule a date in early January. I think our board meeting in January is not until the 26th or 27th, the fourth, I have the date here, I'm sorry. Let me give you that date. It's on, thank you, it's on Wednesday, January the 26th, 2022. But if we have to have a special call meeting for any reason before then, then we will have the reorganizational meeting before then, before that meeting.
I was going to request the board considering an earlier date. I have a conference that is taking me out of town.
Okay.
So if we could do it, if you all can look at your calendars, if we could do that previous week, would be really convenient for me, but I don't know about you guys' schedule.
All right. So you're asking, sir, for the meeting to be rescheduled the week before? Is that from?
The 19th, I guess. Which would be the 19th.
The 19th, okay.
If that works with others.
So we have a, I think it's a consideration for the board to reschedule the Wednesday, January 26th meeting till January the 19th at 5:00, and then we would have the reorganizational meeting at 5:00. You know, adjourn that meeting and then begin our meeting. Mr. Chair, I think we'll need a motion. Will we need a motion, Mr. Mullins?
Well, I don't think we've really said anything for next year, so I don't know that technically we need a motion, but we may need to talk to Mr. Ellsworth in closed session about the timing, and we may need to have a special call meeting to deal with some of the construction things that we might want to talk about. So perhaps we could make sure we understand what we need to do for the construction schedule when we come out of closed session, readdress this issue again.
Mr. Hicks, or is that?
Yeah.
Will that, you just have a conflict on the 26th?
Yeah.
Any other comments or anything in that manner regarding the scheduling or? And if you think of other things that you'd like to do, if you'll let us know, we can certainly make the changes and/or propose those changes for the board's consideration.
That brings us to our next agenda item, is approval of the DCPS surplus land. Scott Mullins?
Yes, Mr. Chair, members of the board. What we're about to talk about is something that is an incredibly significant piece of housekeeping that probably should have been done 30 or 40 years ago. A long time ago, we had all these community schools, and they were given to, we had various school boards historically. It wasn't one United Dickinson County School Board, but each little district had a school board. And basically, we're not looking for action on this tonight, because some questions have come up. But I want to make sure that you understand this, and if you've got questions or concerns about the tracts, that we talk about that. But this would probably be, I think I counted up, somewhere around 95 to 100 tracts of land. Now, these are small tracts of land. These would be tracts of land, some of them would be just big enough to put, you know, a one-room schoolhouse on it. But Freddie Mullins with the IDA, Lehman Kendrick, have done a good deal of work to identify these tracts. And the way the law is in the Commonwealth of Virginia is if we are not using land as part of our educational purposes, then it's our responsibility to declare it to be surplus and transfer it back to the Board of Supervisors. And until this recent work was started, often these little tracts of land just faded into obscurity because they were so small. And about the only time that we would ever hear anything about them would be when the gas company would be looking to do title search, and they would determine that we own part of the surface. And there was never any real money in this from gas, because, you know, the tracts of land, again, some of them would be, you know, the size of this auditorium. So what I wanted you to know is that we'll be coming back to you next month with a resolution. And between now and then, because of some issues that have come up and questions come up, I want to share with each of you these tracts of land, and because they could be in your backyard, or if you've got questions about them. And then explicitly resolved out from the deeds that we're doing are the school properties that we actually use. You know, like this property, like the school property at Clinchco, you know, the properties that we still have work to do on Sandlick. All those properties are excluded, but the whole idea ultimately is for the school system to identify what it really owns and what it doesn't own, to give it back to the Board of Supervisors. And I'll be sending each of you as board members an email with some detailed information, and I want you to look it over, because even though I label this as housekeeping, it's a significant transfer of real property interest, and I want all of you to be comfortable with it. So I really don't need a motion and an action item on this, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to make the board aware of what's going on. If you've got questions about this as a concept, I'll be glad to try to answer them, but the next time, we'll have 94 tracts of land for you to look at, and you can get in the weeds to the extent you want to with it. Thank you.
Thank you. The next agenda item is the presentation of the Communities and Schools of Southwest Virginia. Mrs. Robinson?
Thank you. I'd like to ask Mr. Setser to come forward. Mr. Setser may look familiar, but we are thrilled to have Mr. Setser working in our schools in a very special capacity. Mr. Setser, who's our former compliance director for the Dixon County Schools, is now serving as a regional program director for community and schools in Dixon County. And he has a presentation that I've invited him.
So graciously.
Graciously. He volunteered to come. But this is very, very important, as we've talked often about the emotional and aspect of our children, what we're going through, and we feel that Mr. Setser and his organization can make an impact. Welcome, sir. Thank you for letting me kind of give you a little bit of a hard time.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, and hello, everyone. Very short presentation. I know you have other activities and other business that needs to be taken care of, but we are in the schools now. We've been there in Dixon County for about a month and a half. I put together a very short presentation, just to let you know who we are. We are Communities and Schools of Southwest Virginia. We are the largest dropout prevention organization in the in the United States. And we operate, we like to think we operate, by making relationships. Those relationships are not only with the kids, it's with the staff, it's with our stakeholders, the parents, and our community partners. And what we hope is by doing this that we can free up the teachers to teach while we work with the children that we case manage. Next slide, please. Mr. Bill Milliken founded Communities and Schools a little over 40 years ago. The program has spread into 25 states. There's approximately 164, although I think that number's a little low now, affiliates nationwide, serving over 2,400 individual schools. Next slide. I am part of the Southwest Virginia affiliate. Our main office is in Bristol. That office was founded in 2012. It was accredited in 2016. This program in Southwest Virginia recently expanded. It started out in the city of Bristol and in Tazewell County. We are now in Washington County Public Schools, Smith County Public Schools, the city of Norton, and of course Dixon County. Here in Dixon County, we have two site coordinators, and I'll talk about site coordinators in a little more detail in just a few minutes, that serve all five of our schools here in Dixon County. Up until this point, CIS of Southwest Virginia served approximately 7,000 case-managed students. That's individual students our site coordinators worked with. This year, because of the expansion, we're expected, we're projecting that we'll serve approximately 1,000 students case-managed this year alone in all these counties. Like I said, we're currently in those counties you see listed. We have plans to expand all the way up to the New River Valley and also into East Tennessee here in the next few years. Next slide. Organizationally speaking, if organizationally is a word, we are governed by a board of directors. Our executive director is Mr. Chase Stewart. Our director of operations is Mrs. Alex Littleton. Both those folks are officed in Bristol, but they travel the region quite extensively. We have three regional program directors who oversee the programs in their respective regions. And then the boots on the ground are our site coordinators. Again, I mentioned we have two here in Dixon County. We have Ms. Kim White, who serves the elementary schools, and we have Ms. Carly Tomlinson, who works here on the Ridgeview campus. Of course, none of this would be possible without our stakeholders. We have to build those relationships with the schools and the school personnel. Our donors are extremely important. Our community partners, such as DSS, Behavioral Health, are ways we bring the community into the schools if needed. And of course, we rely a lot on volunteers. Next schedule, or next slide. The mission of CIS is to surround students with a community of support, empowering them to stay in school and achieve in life. Everything we do is built around this mission statement. Next. There's five basics, and they call these five basics, and if you want to call them needs or what students deserve, that is fine, but we leave the, we just call it five basics. The most important one, I believe in the five, is developing a one-on-one relationship with a caring adult. Our site coordinators not only work with the whole school, they also develop a caseload of students they work with individually and provide more intensive services with those individuals. Another one of the five basics, a safe place to learn and grow, a healthy start, a healthy future. When they leave schools, we want them to have a skill that they can use, and hopefully through this whole process, they will give back to the peers and the community once they leave our schools. Next slide. We support those five basics using the evidence-based CIS model. I'm going to briefly go through the model. We'll start at number one. Of course, we have site coordinators in the building. We have our collaborative partners, who is the school, and all the other organizations in the communities. Once a site coordinator goes into the school, they immediately start a needs assessment process. They'll gather data from the school. They'll gather data from VDOE, different community organizations. We survey our stakeholders, the students, and we take that information, and we develop a plan to support the schools. And of course, we work closely with the administration of the school when we develop these plans. Through those plans, we then start delivering our services. And as you can see, there's three tiers of services we offer. We offer tier-one services, which is school-wide. Our coordinators, if they haven't yet, will definitely next semester begin doing things in our schools to support school, all the students in the school. I think because we are new, all of our goals are centered around attendance this year, so they'll begin doing projects in our schools to support increase in attendance. Then we get into the case-managed kids with tier-two and tier-three services. Tier-two is mostly small group work, and then tier-three, we have individual, more intensive supports for those kids. Going through this process, at all times, we're monitoring, and if we need to adjust what we're working on, we will. And then at the end, we will evaluate, and hopefully, we will be successful. And if we use fidelity with the model, we will be. Next slide. This next slide just shows some of the things we do as far as individuals. It can be as simple as basic needs. If a child needs a pair of shoes, socks, or whatever, we'll make sure they get it. And it can be as intensive as referring them to outside partners, such as Behavioral Health. Again, we're new in Dixon County as far as in the schools. We've been here about a month, month and a half. They are currently introducing themselves to our, introducing themselves to our staff. They have completed their needs assessment, their support plans, and they are currently developing their case-managed kid, their load. We're looking to case-manage about 110 kids this year in Dixon County. That number will go up next year. But again, it's a two-pronged approach. We're working in a whole-school fashion, where we're going to support all the kids, and we're working individually, where we're going to case-manage kids with more intensive services. And that's basically communities and schools in a nutshell. And if you want to find out more about us, next slide. We do have, there's several websites out there. This is the one for Southwest Virginia. All you have to do is Google CIS of Southwest Virginia. It'll take you to that site, and you can find out more about the program. I'll be happy to answer any questions you have. We're glad to be here. We hope to be very successful, and I think we will be.
Just on a personal level, I couldn't think of a better person to work with our students than in this role than Mr. Setser. And I want to thank him for all of his work. He knows the needs of our students, and so we are thrilled that he's still part of our school system in this manner.
And any child can be referred to us, and anybody can refer any child to us. And we'll be happy to work with that child. The same procedures we go through for the whole school program we do with a child. We'll do a needs assessment and set goals for that child. Everything we do is totally positive, and we're just here to help. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This concludes our open session, and we'll be time for board comment. I guess I'll go first. I'd just like to say that it was really good to see the kids back in the system today, here meeting with us today. And I'd like to commend Adrian White and Chris Robinson for their work, and have a lot of admiration for April Hay getting to the senator. And I think it was wonderful for us to be able to take the tour today, to be able to walk through out there and to see the accomplishments, what's out there, the new elementary school. And just to look out and see that and know what a blessing that is for the children of our community and our community as well, that we are truly a blessed community.
I second that. It's good to see the students. And there, another, it was good to see them and congratulate them for their achievements. There's another item that I could speak about. There will be a speaker at the Spring VSA Forum speaking about the mental health of students because of the COVID epidemic. That fits in very well with our last presentation. That will be in late April, I think, the 26th, but notice will be sent out. And the speaker is a mental health provider from Galax, and who happens to be a member of the Galax School Board, I believe.
Okay. I'll share that information with Mr. Setser.
That should be timely and interesting.
It was real good to see kids back. I couldn't believe how excited they were.
I know.
If we were always excited to be here as they are, it'd be something else. But, and it was touching to see, you know, how, I think Mr. Robinson said it best, how much they believed in him and how much he believed in them. And same thing you saw with Mr. White and that group. So it's good to see the positive effects that our teachers and coaches and things have on our students at times, for sure. Love the creativity of the biscuit activity. That was pretty cool. It actually reminded me of my favorite sign. As you know, you see banks and churches and things put these signs up. And my favorite one has always been that both sermons and biscuits are made better with shortening. And so I'm going to change it to both biscuits in school board meetings are made better with shortening. So, but it's exciting to see what those kids are going to do and, you know, how they get the excitement as we go into a new year, the things that they're going to be able to accomplish. And, you know, it almost feels like we're getting back to a little bit of being able to do some more of those things. You know, speaking of next year and some other things that we can look forward to maybe doing. Ms. Robinson, I'd like you to check into possibly expanding that esports program. You know, I've seen, it's great. They got a big donation this past couple of weeks. And, you know, I know they're running strong, but I think that is going to be something that will reach a population of kids that maybe other activities that we offer in schools not. You know, possibly, I think we could explore a 21st century program as a possibility to fund that as an after-school program. And so I think we might really reach kids, may help us with, as we get these, we get these biscuits and esports, we don't have to worry about attendance. We'll be good. You know, other than that, I just, you know, I'd like to say all of our teachers and staff to, you know, we're through it, first semester's down. You can get a good break, go home, enjoy your family, and have a good Christmas.
It's very good. It was refreshing to see all those students and their parents, their grandparents here, and I hope we can do that more often.
Yes.
We certainly have a lot to be thankful for in the sports program and the academic program, everything that's, we've been involved with. But I think we've had some success. And sometimes successes don't get as much attention as probably they ought to, and the kids don't get recognized maybe sometimes as much as they ought to. But we still have challenges, and I simply hope that every family is safe and have a safe and happy Merry Christmas and New Year, and everybody's be aware that this stuff that's been out there is apparently coming back in a big way, and we just need to protect our people as best we can and do everything we can to protect each other.
I'd like to thank Mr. Burge for taking us on the tour of the new elementary. It was nice to go over there and see everything that's happening, and it's coming along very well. Excited to see how all that ends up. And I also was excited to see the students here tonight that their achievements be recognized. Thank you from Mr. Robinson for that, and I think that the kids enjoyed that. And I've got a personal comment on the biscuits, okay? So I've got a, I've got a 200-pound 10th grader, and I think it would be an understatement to say he misses the biscuits that we had last year. So thank you, Ms. Hay, for bringing attention to that and wonderful that your students took that initiative. And Senator Ror recognized that, and there may be more to come. There might be an update on that at some point. We might see something from that. So I know my little boy will be very happy, and my big boy will be very happy if that happens. And kind of, I guess, following on that, congratulations to the football program. It was further than they've ever had since Ridgeview opened. Had a very good season. The coaching staff, appreciate them. And the kids, I know, had a really good time. We didn't end up with the way we went, but we went very far and achieved a lot. And I think next year looks very good. Go even farther, do even better. I think the volleyball team had a good year, too. Definitely recognize them. And Mr. Setser, appreciate you coming tonight and giving us a little insight into your organization. Look forward to seeing how that's going to progress and how that'll benefit our students and our school system. And I also would like to just wish everybody a Merry Christmas and enjoy, Mr. Hicks, it's a time with your family. And we'll see everybody in 2022, and hopefully have a very good start to it. So thank you.
At this time, we will now go into closed session pursuant to Section 2.2-3711, Paragraph A of the Code of Virginia. There'll be a closed session for the purpose of, one, employment issues relating to discussion or consideration of specific individuals for employment as teachers, bus drivers, custodians, part-time aides, substitutes, FMLA requests, coaches, resignations, post-and-advertiseful mechanics, and the division superintendent's evaluation pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A and 1, to consult with legal counsel regarding the investment of public funds associated with school construction and consultation regarding actual or probable litigation along with consultation regarding specific matters requiring legal advice pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A, 6, 7, and 8 of the Code of Virginia. Is there a motion to go into closed session?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We're now in closed session.